Anybody online? No one's there, but we're up and going. We want to welcome everybody, need to adjust that. We want to welcome everybody to our Hyde Park City Council member, uh, City Council meeting for September tenth. And we appreciate you showing up and being active participants in our city functions. We have the first item, second item of business is to have prayer or thought and a pledge and Councilmember Osborne, would you lead us in that?
Yep, I'll do that. Our dear kind heavenly father, as we gather here tonight in our city meeting, city council, we pray for direction and guidance as we address different issues within our city and that all those that are here tonight will feel that they can share their thoughts and opinions and they will be considered in any decisions that we make. We pray for Charlie Kirk's family this evening as he has been killed today and pray that they might be comforted and helped through this process. We are thankful for our community that we have to live in and pray that we might all together as members of this community always be thoughtful and kind to others around us. And these things we pray for in the name of thy son, Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
Will you please stand and join me in the pledge?
Thank you, Gerald. I appreciate the comments for today's events. As the pledge said, we are one nation and that's how we should all be. We should all have that. Uh, the next item of business is to accept the meeting minutes from our last council meeting, meeting. Dave, have you got anything? I'm good with it. Stephanie? Tiffany?
No changes yet.
I was not here, so I will not vote tonight on that item.
Good. I'll make the motion, we pass them. Got a motion to approve the meeting minutes from August twenty seven from
I'll second that.
Kurt and a second from Dave. All, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed with nay. Motion carried four zero. The next item is to approve the agenda that you have before you. If you've uploaded it, there was just a it was more for my reminder if you see under the mayor and staff report for advising consent. That was the only thing that had been changed. If you haven't looked at it in the past day. So other than that, council, if you have nothing else to add, we would look for a motion to approve the meeting, uh, the agenda.
How much can we approve the agenda as written?
Got a motion from Tiffany, second.
I'll second it.
Second from Dave. Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed with nay? Thank you. The next item is to receive any resident input. Um, question, comments for uh, for the council, please, please limit them to comments. Obviously, if you're putting questions before the council, they may not be able to have any information for a response on it at this time. We allot three minutes for input. Uh, if it's any item that is not currently on the agenda, so we will proceed to that time at this time for that open moment, please come to the microphone and just state your name. And we'll open it up at this time. We pay no attention, she's got a, she has a shot clock.
That's okay. Uh, we're, we're here regarding me and my family are here regarding the street repairs on eighty five south. Um, they've needed to be done for a long time. We're grateful they're being done. Part of the reason they needed to be done is there was sinkholes along that portion of the street causing damage to the curb and gutter as, as well. And speaking with the construction crew the other day, they said they're not going to replace any of the curbs and gutters that need to be replaced. If those curbs and gutters are not replaced, that need to be replaced, you're going to have your street not matching up with the current way that gutter has sunk. And you're going to have problems with your snowplow removal. People are going to have problems getting in and out of their driveways without bouncing over a curb that is, that will now be sunk into the street. Our, our reason for being here is we want to know if there are any plans to have those curbs and gutters replaced and fixed so that they'll match the nice street repair that we're getting.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments?
Thingbreaker, I'm not here on my own. I have some concerns that other people know I show up here a lot.
More than me, Thing.
At the chief, uh, these motorized electric, I'll call them motorcycles, they're not bikes. I don't know what the law is on them, but I've had several people complain to me about them riding them in your parks, in our parks. I saw one yesterday in Legacy Park, cutting donuts. If you go up and look at Lions Park, you see the trails right up there using uh, Krebs' Hill for a jump. But I also seen them when the street was closed flying up the sidewalk. And I don't know how fast these things go, but they go pretty quick because I followed three of them to the high school yesterday. And I don't know what the law is on them.
I, I can talk to that for, for a bit if you'd like.
That's just the concern that I've heard from several people, so.
Okay.
Hold them, I bring it forward.
All right. Thank you, Thing. Um, one second. Is there any other comments that we have? Now we'll close that public portion. Chief, if you want to speak to that, then we'll go back to the curves.
You bet, absolutely. Um, so this is a, a big problem through the entire state, not just here in Hyde Park. Every chief, every agency is seeing the same issues. Uh, recently, there's been several deaths in the last couple of months, uh, the most recent in Farmington with a thirteen year old boy who was hit and killed on an e-bike. Um, to give some general information, there's three classes of e-bikes. There's a one, two, and three. And then like you're talking about, there's the e-motorcycle, which is a different class. Uh, altogether, the e-motocycles are generally what we're seeing the issues with. They're the ones that are on the jumps, uh, in the parks. They're the ones that the kids are, um, going extremely fast on, uh, popping wheelies down the street and in and out of oncoming traffic. Uh, North Park, um, PD has handled two crashes, uh, this summer involving electric motorcycles. Where one was where a kid, uh, was on a sidewalk or a walking path at thirty-five, forty miles an hour and ended up, uh, broadsiding the car um, on that. So the problem that we're seeing really is that it's, they're acting as a vehicle on the roadway. Even though they have no training, no understanding of the laws of, of the road there, there's no insurance with them. Um, as part of my position, um, as chief there, I, I was elected to the Utah Chiefs of Police Association Board. And so I brought this up a couple of months ago with the board and said, let's put together a legislative work group so that we can address this for this next coming year. Uh, we met two days ago with that, and that is the concern, they, they want to see something happen with this because it, it's rampant through the entire state on that. Currently, the way it sits as far as the laws of the, of the road, um, it is considered an off-highway vehicle. An off-highway vehicle is not allowed to be on the roadway. Um, there are some circumstances where they could possibly make it legal if they have the lamps and the turn signals and the mirrors and the horn and all those same things, just like a razor when you would go to make it, uh, street legal. Um, the law currently says with e-motocycles that the operators of those, um, if they're street legal, they have to have a motorcycle endorsement, which means they have to be at least sixteen on that. And so what I've addressed with the board is why do we not have an age restriction on the e-motocycles already? It's with the e-bikes, the three classes, they have all kinds of age restrictions on who can operate those. Why do we not have anything for the e-motocycles? There's talk about making it or considering the legal definition of those to make it a vehicle rather than an off-highway vehicle. It would be considered a motor vehicle. And the, um, license requirements would then apply to it. So as it stands right now, I guess through the valley, we've met with the chiefs and I've asked the chiefs to let's come together, let's figure out how we're going to handle this all together because it's, it's here, it's North Logan, it's uh, Millville and Providence, Logan's having issues with them too. And so we're trying to make a uniform approach to how we handle that. Um, they can, the kids can be cited right now, uh, for operating a vehicle without their proper endorsement as well as the parents. Um, where we could go on the parents for that. Um, the problem that, one of the challenges with it is that so many parents want the convenience of being able to send their kid down to school or to practice or to wherever on these e-motocycles. But they don't fully understand the liability that is, uh, tagged with it. If their kid causes a crash, they have the potential then to be sued and to be held, uh, financially liable for that uh, crash there. So it, it is a concern that we're trying to do. Most of the time when people are reporting to us, we're getting there and they're gone. Um, we have had a case this year where we had a gentleman who chased some kids on the e-motocycles and up and over the curb here at the uh, church in, on Hyde Park on Second South there. And, um, that one ended up going all the way up through the court process. They're dealing with that right now. Um, we don't want people chasing the kids either, but we also don't want the kids now being reckless. So we're trying to balance that. It, it's a difficult position that we're in, but we are very much aware of that and trying to figure out how to, how to handle that. The newsletter article that I have for this, uh, month also deals with that. Um, it should be.
I, I know I, I addressed it in, in last month's or this current month's news, uh, newsletter that came out. And, uh, yeah, there's, there's definitely some challenges. Not only making Lions Park, when, then when winter comes, we're going to have erosion and things like that that's going to happen. And I, I know as a police commission, we've been discussing it, trying to get a a unified with North Logan and Hyde Park, a code for it. But I've also had some residents come forward like Andy Chekets said that somehow, you know, it, every one of us, if we were younger, we'd have probably been on those same things, but it's, it's different now. Why? Everything has, the world has changed quite significantly with safety and things of that nature. So, um, we have to figure out how to have some legal coexistence versus telling people absolutely not on here, how, if you're going to do it, you got to do it in a legal fashion.
Right.
I, I know I've seen the same three, three guys, and they're really good on one wheel, all those things have too, but they go past my house on one wheel. And, uh, but they've got to be able to figure out how to do that and it's going to take, uh, a a lot of parent buy-in and that's where it's going to have to start some education of, of what is right and what is wrong and our parks are not motocross tracks, you know? Why can't they do like everybody else does and trespass on Jack Nixon's property, right? So, I'm just kidding on the Jack Nixon's property. But, uh, there, there needs to be a place for them to go and enjoy those, those motorcycles, but it's definitely not in the city streets, sidewalks, the parks. And, and we need to figure out how to work that. So that's one of the things I know the police commission has been talking and then the chief's been working on trying to find out how we can do that.
There, there's a major education component to it.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I think if, if the PD across the valley and the state were to go just heavy-handed and everybody gets impounded and everybody gets cited and the parents get cited, that, that's too far on the pendulum. I think that there needs to be a balanced approach to it, uh, and education for the parents is part of that and the process of trying, trying to figure out how do we, how do we do that?
So I, I, not only is this council aware of it, I, I know North Logan's very much aware of it and probably most of the people that are in front, are, are breaking that, that code lived by the mayor up there. They're her neighbors. So she's very much aware and, and wants to try and bring it into some sort of perspective. Uh, the other item on, on the curb and gutter this last spring or summer, Marcus and I and, and the staff, we had this discussion of needing to figure out how we budget for the repair of these curbs and gutters. Uh, we, we've always budgeted to install additional sidewalk, but we've never had that in our budget of repairing curbs and gutters and we're getting all this new infrastructure put in, these new developments, and they have curbs and gutters and some of the older ones, uh, as this gentleman was stating that it's there. We need to maintain that as well. So there's, they've created it in the budget to start now budgeting for the repair of that of the curbs, gutters, the ribbon strips to preserve, it not only preserves vehicles, but it preserves our act, our asphalt. We put a nice great road. Uh, top new, uh, layer down on Second East. But we don't have cement along the sides. And that's exactly where all the alligatoring and the, and the asphalt starts and, and everyone. If you've been involved in this enough, you know that roads are preserved better when they have a, a preservation edge to it, curb gutter, the ribbon on the side, and you get a lot more longevity out of it. So that is something that the city is budgeting for. Um, starting to do that. And so we're, we're, uh, we'll see where that gets us for this coming fiscal year, where we come in on that. That's, that's something that we have to do. We, we have new developments, we have to maintain it as well as continue trying to put in sidewalks where in the historic part of town, in the core part of town where we don't have sidewalks and we want to get kids out of the streets. So that is something that we, we're trying to do. It wasn't a line item, but it is now to, to try and do that. So that's, that's where it is in the budgetary process, trying to get those fundings saved up for it to do those very things.
Mayor, since you've addressed that, I just have a question. What the problem is with the gutter ribbon strip sidewalks? I mean, if the issue was sinkholes in the street, what's, what was the impact on the sinkholes, the sidewalk also was falling apart? I'm just wondering why the requirement for the replacement.
He sent pictures, I can forward that on to you. I know that the sidewalks in every part of they need some repair.
Um, would you like me to speak to that?
Pardon?
Would you like me to speak to that?
Go ahead.
So to put a little bit of a finer point on what the mayor said, the city does not have anything in our budget this year for sidewalk or for uh, curb and gutter repairs. That wasn't budgeted as part of this project. It's probably not going to happen for them unfortunately this time around. However, we are creating a list, we are starting some curb repair projects that we'd already put on the list that are a little bit worse for wear. And we'll definitely add this one to our ongoing maintenance list. Um, the road repairs were put on our maintenance list after we found, after the sinkholes were reported last year. And so we wanted to get that road redone as soon as possible to fix those holes. But as the mayor stated, last year when we were doing that bid, the city did not budget for those curb.
So this is just an older sidewalk curb that's been there for however long and just needs repairs or replacement?
Yes, I went and walked the street with our public works director. Um, the curbs are in bad shape. We have others in the city that are in worse shape that we're planning on uh, repairing, but we have added these to the list.
Okay, thank, thank you.
Go ahead, Marcus. The city never budgeted for curb repairs in the past. That was a need that we found in our budgeting process for this year that we said we want to start sending aside money for it now because it is a problem.
So when, when we've for example, when we've done the overlay on Second East, they did it down by a few years ago, did it down in, near the Great Church. It's never been part of the, the process of we're doing an overlay, we're going to go through and do curb and gutter. That hasn't been part of the process. We just go in and have the asphalt ground or we do an overlay on it. But we see a, a need in the city to start having that budget and because we're, we're behind the ball on it. And, and that needs to be addressed as we continue to grow, that we have the funds not only for the sidewalks, but the repair and maintain the infrastructure that we have. I, I, I know of one that I walk on quite a bit and it's the sidewalks heaved up probably two inches. And so that it's, it's something that the city has to address. And so I'm glad that we're finding these holes that we have in our process and we need to re-fix them and make it a line item and start budgeting for that and get these repairs taken care of. We, we can't take, we don't have money to just throw at some things. We're, we do run on a very shoestring type budget and, uh, it's, it's some of the things, we, we're looking at other ways to think outside the box on how we can repair with when we do have other cement work going on and there might be a half a yard left somewhere, we, we might be able to gosh, if we have an extra half a yard, let's, let's throw in a little repair off of this. We were putting in some sidewalk, but we got some extra cement. We might be able to fix some things in that, that regard, but, uh, we're trying to figure out how to do this budgetarily and that's mayor. Sir. How, I mean, the thing, how much do we lose though? By putting, shouldn't the curb and gutter or the curb and sidewalk going first? Well, th- this is, yeah, that, this is, this is in the, already existing. Right. But how much do we lose by putting, looks to me like the priority should be putting the curb and gutter in and budget for the street. I mean, I'm sorry, but that's what it looks like to me because how do you match that up after the fact? On some of these, uh, older core part of towns, that becomes very difficult where we have you know, twenty-five feet of asphalt, but we have a ninety-foot right away. And where do we put that curb and gutter? Do we put it out at our right of way and leave? And fifteen feet of dirt?
That exact question is the reason why we wanted to start specifically budgeting for it. Typically in Hyde Park's past, mo- most of our funds have been separated into projects and like emergency funds. Only in the past couple of years have we specifically created line items in the budget to start saving up for waterline maintenance. Uh, you know, sidewalk replacements, curb and gutter replacements. And so really it's only been in the past few years that we've started, realized there's a huge maintenance need in the city and we can't just keep putting Band-Aids over things when there's a catastrophic failure. We need to start planning and preparing for these. And so that's really the change. Why wasn't it done that way in the past? I don't know. Um, you know, a lot of these were things that have been identified with new staff, people coming to the city. Don't know why the previous, previous owners didn't do the maintenance on, on it, but we're trying to fix that now.
Yeah, so it's not, not a great answer, but we've, we identified this very thing this gentleman had brought up and we're trying to get the funds to address those kinds of problems now.
He, he said, why the previous owners didn't do?
What they're saying, he's referring to city.
Oh, are that?
Oh, no, I was, I was speaking to largely the city as a whole, hadn't really planned for these things. It was more like, let's put a road in. And then twenty years later, roads fail and it's like, oh, we better do something about it. But what we're doing now is saying, hey, we put a road in, we probably should start saving money now. So when that curb and gutter falls apart, we can replace it instead of having this situation happen. So it definitely wasn't a comment towards the residents. It was a comment towards the past city leadership, which I, I take some of that responsibility because now I'm in that seat, so.
Yes. Brian, can you, can you come up with?
In the sog hut, just the sections later on after the blacktop's in without ruining that road.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Just the one spot out in front of their place. It's a big hole down in there. And we're worried about people stepping in or something getting hurt. And then the city would be liable for
Yeah.
Something crashing birds.
Brian, how many spots do you think are just like?
Oh, there, on our street, there's at least seventeen.
Oh.
And you. Two real bad ones, but, uh.
So you're saying there's two really awful ones?
Yeah. And that's where the, part of the cave in was.
So I, I know they can do that because I replaced my driveway and I did some of the curb and gutter entrance into it and not disturbing the asphalt.
Down the road is thirty-five years old.
Pardon?
I can tell you how old the road is, it's thirty-five years. That's how long I've been there.
How long is?
Been in Hyde Park a lot longer.
No, don't look a day over thirty-five, Brian.
Yes.
Other than when you're walking. Thank you. The next item of business is to have the chiefs report.
Same. Um, one last final comment on the electric motorcycles. I'm happy to talk to any of you afterwards as well. Uh, if you have ideas or suggestions that I could take back, happy to do that. I wanted to bring up kind of a snapshot of where we are, uh, this year compared to last year. So starting, let's start with the simplest, I guess, at the top there. Uh, this last week, the PD handled a hundred and twenty-eight calls. Uh, ninety-seven of those were from North Logan and thirty-one were for Hyde Park on that. Um, as you look down to the left there, that first big graph there, calls for service. Uh, these numbers are from January one to, uh, September one. And as a PD, we've handled two hundred and eleven more calls, uh, this year than we did last year. Uh, some of those are, uh, priority type calls, some of those are uh, non-priority calls, but in general, that's still obligated at a time. We have handled two hundred and eleven more compared to last year. To the right of that, that graph also shows traffic stops. We're up seventy-seven more stops this year than what we were last year at the same time through September one. And then if you scroll to the bottom there, uh, as we've talked with the council, you kind of wanted to get an idea rather than just every call that we handled for the week. Um, kind of some of the major priority type calls. And so we came up with these. We have the accident PDs, uh, property damage, personal injury, hit and run, the assaults, simple and aggravated burglaries, child abuse, child neglect, uh, domestic disputes, drugs, uh, DUIs, medical emergencies, sex offenses, sex offenses against children and thefts. These seems to be a lot of our priority type calls. So the blue line represents all of twenty twenty-four. Um, twenty twenty-five, of course, we're, we still have four months more to go. This kind of gives you a good idea of where we're at, uh, compared to last year. Fifty-one accidents. Uh, twenty twenty-four, we ended with the ninety-four. The assaults were at two compared to eight and from last year, three to five and so forth on that. I am thinking that with the last four months, that will be over on the medical. I am thinking that with the last four months, that will be over on the medical emergencies. The DVs, I think there's a good chance that we'll hit over on that. And I'm not sure about the child abuse and neglects, but we seem to have been getting a lot of the CANARS, child abuse and neglect reports. Uh, from DCFS recently. So there's a good chance that we'll be over on that as well and possibly the burglaries. But this gives you the trend, I guess, of kind of where we're at, just in a snapshot, say, yep, some of those will be over, some of those we're pretty close on. That's kind of where we're at right now. Like I said, we're working a lot with the electric bikes, the, that problem. Um, it's a major one. It takes a lot of, a lot of time there to try to figure that out with them. Uh, does council have any questions in particular about what I presented here? Or is there other things that you'd like to see too that I can add to that?
I think this is a, a good thing of the big, the big items, chief. Wish we could see a trend downward, but uh. It just shows the. Resources on the police of what they're doing and have, what they have to deal with.
So our guys have been busy. Um, one of the things that we've tried to keep up is the stops. I think the stops are more educational than enforcement. Um, which is good. I think people have good interactions with the cops there. And that's something that's been a long time coming for the PD. I'm grateful to see the guys still doing that and. Taking the calls that they are in between, in between those.
Yeah, uh, aside from these, there's still a lot of the citations that they're dealing with, but these are the big, big items that they're. Unfortunately have to deal with. Chief, where are you currently with your staffing? I know we've been short a couple of officers. Are we still short a couple of officers?
We are still short on that. Uh, we got an application today and we have a plan in place for that. Uh, one of the positions that we're short on is a detective position. And I've had two in particular uh in the PD that have expressed some interest to go into that. Um, the police academy at Bridgeland is ending or finishing up in November. On that and we're, we've had another one who's put in an application for that, but he's not usable until end of November on that. Um, so we're looking to uh become fully staffed at that point with that, with some of the hires that we can get, so. Which will help with some of these other concerns that we're seeing with the traffic and with.
Okay, thank you. Council, do you have any questions for the chief? Comments? Thanks, chief.
Thank you.
Uh, Marcus, we'll look to you on some staff input.
Okay. So there's my regular staff reports in the box. Highly recommend y'all read it because it's. It's not that special, but it gives you the update of everything that's going on. One particular item that's come up that I'd like to discuss with the council for just a brief minute is we've had a soccer club. Reach out to um schedule some of our fields. The typically this soccer club uses our fields for free, which is fine. Are all of our fields in the city are first come, first served. Problem is if somebody else pays for them, then. The soccer clubs lose out. So the soccer club had that experience over the weekend and decided they want to start paying to schedule their fields. Um, so we're doing that. We're working with them according to our policy, but we as city staff just have a concern that we want to bring up to the city council that. This is a rather large soccer club and if we leave them to their own devices, we're pretty sure they're gonna end up. Taking over all of our fields. And so we would like to work on some new policy language for our field rentals. And maybe put some caps or some limits to make sure not one group can monopolize the fields and that they still are public fields and they don't become. You know, soc- this soccer club's fields because they're using them all the time. There's a few suggestions in the document in the box. And are there any thoughts the city council has just you'd like to share right now with us as we start working on this uh potential problem?
This, this has come up because uh they, they don't scare, they, they haven't been scheduling our parks. It's been an assumption. And honestly, uh, it's not scheduling it. We have sprinklers on and then I end up having to call people in on overtime to turn off sprinklers and I'm tired of that. You can either schedule it or you run the risk.
Right, and the problem with that is if it's not scheduled, we're not getting any revenue to cover that overtime. So that comes out of our. The taxes that the people pay. So really, we feel like if we're gonna be paying somebody overtime to come babysit the fields during these events. We need to have them registered and a fee paid so we can cover that staff time and we're not dipping into our. Other funds that can do other things.
And I, I just don't think uh city resources should figure into anybody's business plan. That, that should not be the case. Um. As I, as, as they claim as a five oh one three C, that just means they don't pay money to shareholders. So uh, they're, they're, they're still have employees, they're still charging everybody, all those kids to come and utilize. City resources. Without paying for city resources.
Item wrong, this would take a ton of time. Um, but it, it's in very infant stages of planning where we haven't even written anything down yet. We just had a little meeting as staff threw around some ideas. And so that's what you have in front of you is just some of the ideas that we had. So any comments on those ideas um that I, we can take back?
Keep, keep in mind, this is not rec soccer. This is not the city. What we participate with North Logan Recreation Soccer. This is a soccer club.
These are private clubs to make, make money off of this.
And I guess that's the question I would have Marcus is what impact does this have on our. Parks and Rec that we do with North Logan. How, how many of the fields do they use? Do they use any of them? Are they?
It doesn't have any, it doesn't have any right now, but the rec program's only growing. North Logan, they are able to. Schedule most of their programming on their fields for soccer. But it's not gonna be too much longer before they're gonna need our fields. And so that's really the question is how do we make sure that our fields stay. Public fields and don't become monopolized by any one group.
There, there's another soccer group that called and reserved the field. They paid to.
Wasn't even, it was a family event. It wasn't even a rival club. It was a family saying, we love to get together and have a family party and do soccer and have food. And we said fantastic and they paid the fee. And then somehow the soccer club found out and they called us and were mad because we disrupted their tournament. And we said, you weren't on the schedule. Sorry, but, but now they are getting on the schedule, which is the problem.
Which is what we've wanted to have.
We wanted, but now they want to schedule everything for the entire soccer season and now we may not have any fields available to the public.
I like your limit of schedule it out one month in advance, did you say? You could schedule up to a month in advance?
Because right now with the other reservations, we open at January first and you can schedule any time during the year, but. Yeah, that's a problem with the soccer.
I know this, the soccer league, they're, they have like two months in the spring and two months in the fall.
But don't they depend on the cities for their fields?
Yeah.
That bothers me.
Yes.
They, they don't have any, and they want to make money. And yet, we want to be able to control and. Take care of our fields.
That's where every other municipality is, is doing what we're doing, what we're.
Right, Logan, Logan City charges a field per use. Uh, North Logan City, they have the same program. Most of their fields are monopolized by the rec program. Um, we have a per day charge that we charge people, but like I said, the bigger concern is having someone take over. So I. You like the limiting a month in advance?
I say a month in advance. I'm fine with, I don't care if all the fields get scheduled out. I don't think we need to reserve any. Fields for public use because if you're gonna just play a pickup game with your kids, you can hit a variety of places. And this income will go to our parks and recs department and help us maintain and improve fields. So I feel like they can schedule it, a limit of how far in advance is useful because then it, it keeps them from monopolizing the time. I like that. Um, but they're gonna have to be on top of it. If they want to use our fields, they're gonna have to be on it every month scheduling ahead of time and.
So please, please read through the comments on that document that you have inbox and uh.
Let's get back with you.
Get back, get back with Marcus, uh, actually, uh.
Melissa?
Melissa's.
Melissa's helping out a lot with this.
Been doing this one?
But yeah, we're, we're gonna work together to actually write the policy.
I think that's a good start.
The only other update in the staff report that I'll mention is Mr. Chad DeVries came to the council a while back, asking for somebody to come out and look at his meter. Uh, our public works director and I met with him and had a. A chat about what he perceived to be the issue and what we perceived to be the issue. We didn't really agree or come to a resolution. He wasn't very happy with the answers that we gave him. Much like our friends who visited tonight, sometimes the reality just is that. We, we don't, the city doesn't offer that to people. So the full report's in there. If you have any questions or concerns, feel free to contact me.
Wanted a new meter. It looks exactly like the one that's in there.
Yeah, but we brought a new meter. It's exactly the same as the one he has. He wanted the city to pay for a, a bigger and better one. And I said, no, that's. We don't do that. If you want to pay for one, you can't. He wasn't very happy about that.
So bottom line, it, it's in his court now.
Yes, and, and quite honestly, it should be watering with secondary water. He just. Runs into the same problem that you had in your neighborhood uh with secondary water access from the person. So, and that's, that's not the city's problem, where he should be.
Yeah, the staff report also has updates on cer- certain projects that are going on with the park, the waterline, the wellhouse. Um, so yeah, feel free to reach out to me if you have any questions.
Yep, um, the big thing is, is tentatively. October, mid-October asphalt uh down on Center Street, tentatively. That's what they're saying. How far behind are they on the schedule? Was that?
Um, well. I don't really want to speculate a ton. I put the schedule inbox for you to look at.
And that was, I couldn't quite tell which colors meant what completely in front. They're, they're technically not gonna be behind until they hit our deadline.
Let's put it this way, find today's date and go down and you can see what's supposed to have been accomplished by now. And go out there and look and see if it's been accomplished. I'll, I'll just say that.
Working on the well, on, on the wellhouse, I, first time I've seen anybody out there in a week.
You're doing the stucco, so that's good.
So, yeah.
Insight, we're almost done.
So, anyway.
They are making progress.
But sorry, mayor. Done.
Do we have any recourse? Are we gonna take any recourse?
Technically not.
We will, we are, we are hoping and praying we don't have to take that route, but there is an option in the contract if we reach the end and the work has not been done.
Right, so. I'll move on to some of my comments. Um, we have a person. That is. Not only is running for city council, but they're volunteering to serve on planning commission as well. So either way, going to be providing service to the city. Charlene Williams uh comes with a great deal of ex- experience in. Property and legal, uh, a lot of professional background that's going to play advantageous to the, to the residents, to our city. And willingness to serve and that's what I would propose that she's here tonight if you have questions for her. But uh, she's been coming to the meetings and trying to get herself versed on things. But if you have questions or comments, I've, if not, I'd look for approving consent or uh. Approving consent for her to serve on planning commission.
I move that we approve and consent Charlene Williams for planning commission.
All agree? Yep.
Yes.
And she's currently helping Stephanie, correct? I'll with the youth council, correct?
Is helping with the council and I go get her.
So you're not gonna see her at home anymore. She's gonna help us. So, um. Mac, if you could get some contact information, she has to accomplish certain training before. Uh, participating, I'm sure she'll rock that out PDQ, so. If you get that from her. Additionally, um, if you recall on Seventh East, we had. Some agreements, there's specifically one when we put in. On the southwest corner, the. Excuse me, the retention for our sidewalk all on Carl's property. Carl wanted to put a fence in. They wanted to have a privacy fence, but if he put it on his property, it would come up about two foot above. Above the, the retention wall. And so we have an agreement with, with Carl that. If the city has to access anything within that area, that's. We're sorry about your fence, but that's on you. And he agreed with that. We don't have any utilities. I know there's some. Uh, power utilities down there that you can't, couldn't go on, but uh. With that said, Brent Kelly is on the southeast corner of that. Of that intersection and he's wanting to install a retention wall. If you, if anybody's familiar with his property, it's got quite a slope there. The challenge for him to do it, the city still owns our right away. Yes, several feet beyond the sidewalk. If he goes beyond. Our property, there's a utility easement that he can't do his retention wall. So by the time he gets out of that utility easement. That retention wall is up on the flat part of his property, up next to his driveway. So, um. I'm looking for uh the council to give us approval that we can enter into a similar agreement that we did with Carl. That he's wanting to put a retention, a rock retention uh. Barricade along a, a foot or so off the city sidewalk so that uh he could. Retain his yard. Some of the slope was cut out when we put the sidewalk in there. So he's, he's wanting to be able to do that. So, yeah, I, I, you know, we've already got our curb and gutter where it's gonna be. And I don't see any issue with it at all.
Yeah.
I hope we use common sense, let him do it.
I think we've done similar, in Mountain Gate we did, they did rock walls and they have a public utility easement running through the same area.
So.
So I think, I think it's.
Then we will, if it's good with the council, we'll get that in place with, with Brent and uh he'll. Move on and if you need any rocks, you can just sink a shovel anywhere in Hyde Park and hit them. I'm, I'm sure Charlene's got a couple. All right, thanks Brent.
Brent, did you bring chocolate?
Oh.
Okay, let's not approve this yet, yeah. The raspberry ones that you brought one year were amazing. Yeah. Brent, you're, you're, you're amazing. Thank you.
Deborah.
That's, no, we had already approved it. Now he's just bringing chocolate. Yeah, well, tell your wife hello for us. Um, the next thing is we've got a presentation for the results of the park survey. Ron's gonna be driving the ship on this one, so. Ron, can you provide us with this?
Last time they had up here.
Yeah, we'll get you hooked up here in just a second.
Oh.
Is that working? Yes.
It's only.
We'll, we'll, we'll only be on the big one here.
Got bifocals, trifocals on and that's gonna look like one word.
Alrighty, well, um, well, I must have. Yeah, we're on, we're on now. Um, does, has everyone had a chance to review and look at the survey results? Um, a- any, first of all, before I jump into the results, were there any? Any questions about using it or any issues that you had with it or was it pretty intuitive?
We had a couple of residents that had trouble. But I don't.
Yeah. So just a couple of things to note here. If you, as you're using it, if you click on any of the arrows down the side, it'll expand. To have something underneath and that just makes it so, it doesn't just keep getting, seem so long, right? We, it's kind of contained. And uh, uh, about the survey itself, we got four hundred and thirty-one responses. And as I look at the number of households in Hyde Park, there's only fifteen hundred. And so you probably have a twenty-eight percent response rate from your households or close. I mean, you might have some people who took it to in the house, same ho- household. And, and so, but I would say you probably are between twenty and twenty-eight percent of your residents participated. Your adult residents, and so I think that's pretty good. And um, and so four thirty-one, you go, well, is that all? And actually, that's a lot, you know, and I, I want to point out that when we got them. There was actually a variety of ways of inviting people, emails, social media, text messages, posters, flyers, the website, hometown days. And each contributed. You know, you, there were, there were some that came, so you don't want to pick a single method of communicating. If you want to do something like this, I think you need to use a variety of them and they all seem. and they all seem to work and all contribute in a meaningful way. Um, interestingly enough, most people did take it on their mobile phone and probably among here, you've, many of you probably took it on your mobile phones as well. Any questions? Um, area participants, well, all, most of them are in Hyde Park, but because we wanted to find out if people outside of Har- Hyde Park were using the survey, we allowed some of them in, but as you know, we only invited people inside of Hyde Park, so we don't know that we have a full representation of what people outside of Hyde Park are using. But we can find out about these few and how frequently they use it. And you know, they're not much different than the people inside of Hyde Park. Um, demographically, I think you have a wonderfully balanced uh sample here. Um, young and old, a lot of people in the middle. Um, a few more females than males, that's normal. Typically about fifty-five percent females and forty-five percent males, that's normal. In a rare case, we'll have them be balanced, but usually the women, I'll just say, they just participate better, and they did in your case as well. Um, how long have they lived here? Well, you do have a lot of recent people, one to four years or five to nine years. And you still have quite a few who've been here for a long time, so twenty years or more. But it's very balanced, and so you can look at old timers versus the more recent people. It's very handy. Most people do have children who participated in the survey, sixty percent, um, forty percent don't have children in the household anymore. And as you know, and that's probably typical of Hyde Park, most people own or they're buying their home. We asked which parks people used, and on the right-hand side, you can see that sixty-eight percent use Lower Lions Park the most, followed by Upper Lions Park.
Interesting.
A few people said none of these, but not very many. You know, only nine percent said, oh, we don't use any of your parks. So, you know, the parks are getting used. This is in the past year and definitely Lower Lions and Upper Lions. He said, that's interesting, and I, I, when we talked earlier, there was some surprise. Oh, really? You know?
I mean, that was the park I took my kids to, but with the new park, I would have thought more people were at Legacy Park. Yeah.
It's in use a lot, but like North Logan said, that's the best park they never paid for.
And now, one of the things I wanna mention on anything, you can say, well, do women, which one do women use more, or which one do men use more? So you know, you can, you can do that. And that's just for curiosity's sake. If you ever have a question about something, and women are using Lower Lions Park as well. Uh, but, so you can do things like that. There's not very often do we find any gender differences. Often we find age differences, but um uh, time in the city sometimes, but that's more correlated with age oftentimes. So you'll see some age differences. You definitely see differences among those with children in the home. We won't do that right now. How frequently do you go to parks? So we said, do you go daily? Do you go weekly? Do you go monthly or less than monthly? And what we did was if they went daily, we said, well, they go at least twenty times a month. And if they went weekly, we said they go at least five ti- no, four times. And we actually just did the math, so it was, it was the number of households times the number of users times the frequency of uses. And so, oh, I touched, I touched the cord, sorry. And so.
Do you take into account winter time that they're probably not going as much?
In this case, we didn't, but we, we could have, but we didn't do that. But um, so then in this case, we have, in general, there's eighty-six daily household uses of Lower Lions Park. Um, and seventy-five. Now that's not, this is household, so then, so going with kids, so there'd be more than that, right? This is the number of households that visited. And Lee Park and Pavilion, not so much. And Lower Lions and Legacy Park, well, actually, all of these top four quite a bit. You know, they're all pretty heavily used daily, City Office Park being pretty low, and Lee's Park and Pavilion. The lowest.
Interesting, the, the, we all know that if, if we opened it up to the valley, they would all be at Lee Park because that's where the soccer is all played. And that's utilized, that would just skew the state of, so.
Yeah. A valid point. Okay, this next slide is actually a combination of all of the ones beneath it. So for each park, like this one, we found out, well, how often do you go? How safe is it? How clean is it? What's the upkeep? What are the amenities? So for each park, we asked these things, and then for each park, we had people comment. So what's going on in the park? And they, they would leave their comments, like there's forty-seven comments about Lee Park and Pavilion. And we summarize these forty-seven comments just to kinda give you a sense of the themes that came in. But the first page is kind of useful to look at everything overall. So you can dig deep on a specific part, but you can also look overall, and this page kinda gives you the overall. And on the top, we took the two positive ratings. Excellent and good, you know, that we took the two positive ratings, and on the bottom, we took the two negative ratings. First thing I wanna say is there's not very many negative ratings. Um, least, most negative was Lee Park and Pavilion, but it's still not very negative. But, but on the top, we have, so, so for example, uh, safety is a big deal, and Lee Park and Pavilion is the least safe, but it's not unsafe. It's just more neutral, right? It's, I mean, there's a hard, nobody said Lee Park and Pavilion was, was unsafe. But very few said it was extremely safe, you know, very safe. So they didn't pick the top two, they picked the middle one. So it may be something to look into some of these things for Lee Park and Pavilion, which had the lowest upkeep, the lowest safety, the lowest amenities, and the lowest in cleanliness. So that looks like that part could use a little bit of attention, and the same with City Office Park, and the rest are doing pretty good. With Lower Lions Park being rated pretty high on a lot of things. And that's the one people go to the most. It's the safest one, it's, you know, and it's good to know that the one they go to most regularly is also the one that's rated the best, but you know, I thought that was really useful.
It's pretty close to all the others.
Yeah, yeah. Now you can find those results underneath for each park, but you know, maybe looking at the overall is more useful and easy for you, although you do have the details. And then your Parks and Rec team, they can dig into any of these parks and they can go through the comments and they can look for things that people complained about and what they suggest for improvements. And I just suggest you, you know, you have your people over that, take some time there. You'll notice here on each one of them though, um, like this is the City Office Park, and I saw the pickleball courts just behind here. And here's somebody who said, love the new pickleball courts, that's a male, he's a sixty-five to seventy-four, doesn't have any children, he's been here ten to fourteen years. So you don't know about the person specifically, but you get a good, good idea who's on the other side of that comment. And this park tends to be the messiest when we visit. There's been broken glass, da-da-da, and this is a female aged twenty-five to thirty-four. She does have children, she hasn't been here too long. And here she's talking about it. So I'm not gonna go through each of these parks during our visit here, but they're here. Walking paths. Um, we spent a little bit of time on walking paths. Um, there are three walking paths that we asked about. Um, they tend to be used by about thirty to forty percent of residents. Some people don't use them very much. But you know, about thirty to forty percent do, and on average, you get about three point seven walks per month from people. So I would say it's almost kind of like a weekly thing. They get out and do a walk. It's not a daily for these. First, I mean, some people, it's daily, but if you look across, it's not, not that high. Um, but there, I'm sure there's some people who use it quite regularly. This is a time when though, when you might wanna go, well, what is it? How does it work for older people? You know, so you can say, I wanna look at everybody aged sixty-five and older. Um, there are eighty-six of them in the survey, and they use it about the same. It didn't even change. So, so young and old are using it about the same. Canal paths was the next thing we asked about. Actually, the canal paths are used a lot more. We saw three point seven uses for the, you know, the in-city one, but the canal paths are high. And as a matter of fact, the not at all is only thirty percent, and the, and the, and the walking paths, the not at all, I guess, range between fifty and thirty percent. So, but the canal paths are used a little bit more often. And uh, it's used eight point six times. And also, would you be interested in the city seeking easements? Well, that was super high. So that's a slam dunk. Now the hard work will begin, if you can do it. But um, there's a lot of interest in having easements uh for trails along the canal. Um, the canyon trails was also the thing, is also used, interestingly enough, about as often as the city. So some people do it in the city, some people do it up in the canyons. Um, and um, I, I found that to be interesting. Uh, I'm sure in the wintertime, that would change, good point, Mayor. But we didn't ask about time of year. Um, and uh and so the can, so then a fair amount of use, a fair amount of use for the walking paths and the canyon trails, a lot of use for the canal paths. Then we explored improvements. Which of the following activities, walking, hiking, mountain biking, other, do you enjoy on the trails and paths in Hyde Park Canyon? And most of it's walking or hiking, a little bit of mountain biking. When we talk about what improvements could the city use to make sure the walking path, to, 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 to increase your usage of the walking paths and canyon trails, um, they just wanted more of them. Uh, some of them wanted to expand the city walking biking trails and expand the canyon walking back biking trails. We didn't put on here, expand the canal paths, that'd probably be the top one, if we had done that. We just didn't think to do it.
Alright, that's interesting because I think a lot of this is location-based. Cause when you say walk the canal, I can walk out of my house and walk to the canal easily, go to like Lions Park or Wolf Pack Way is like a destination to go and walk. So I don't know that it's as much the canal path that they like, but some kind of path through.
As a way to get.
Neighborhood, it's what I think is the bigger issue. I don't know that it's so much.
It may be, and we didn't explore that very fact, and it's a good point. But we do have better connectivity to other parks, so they wanted to expand them, both the walking and the canyon, and then have the trails lead to destinations like parks and commercial areas. That's actually quite high. It's not the highest, like the, uh, general expand, but it is the highest specific, might, might we say, a purpose of these trails, and then better connectivity to other parks is also pretty high. Um, advertising awareness comes in a little, but adding monuments and markers, like historical markers and so forth, not so much. A little bit, but not so much. We asked them to comment, and so we have a lot of comments. The majority of comments tended to be around trail maintenance and weed control, and also, I guess we heard it today, motorized vehicle access and restrictions. So we, we put them all together. You could go here, click on motorized vehicle access and restrictions and see what they have to say. Help keep e-bike, help the walking paths, they go too fast. Always consider off-road vehicle, year-round access, bigger trucks off limits, above water tank in the parking lot. That's not so much about that. Open to motorcycles, make, make it dirt, make a dirt bike friendly trail. Anyway, it goes both ways. Where people want, but there's not a lot of comments on this. Eleven. But that's one of the things you can do and, and actually see the results. Where do you recreate? Do you recreate on the left-hand side, always in Hyde Park, often in Hyde Park, or often elsewhere, almost always elsewhere? And for jogging and running and visiting a park, almost everybody's in Hyde Park. Although there are people who go elsewhere a little bit. Um, regarding mountain biking, it's not here. Um, a little bit, but not so much. And I, I guess it just is true that there's more mountain biking opportunities elsewhere. So if they mountain bike, they go elsewhere. And then there's comments that we can look at uh underneath here, if you want to read the comments about it. Um, I would like to show you, now, we had gone through a lot of things, asking them what we should expand and improve as we went through the walking paths and the canyon trails and so forth. But we did say below is a list of city improvements that were presented earlier. Which one do you think the city should prioritize? And so people picked their number one. And then we said, well, okay, now what's your number two? And then on the right, we have the ones plus the twos. We put them together, and this lets you really just see kind of a priority order of the things that people hoped for or found desirable uh from the highest to lowest, and this could really help you as you try to plan. Think through what you're gonna do, when you're going to do it. Expanding or improving the walking path was clearly the highest. The splash pad was quite high. But so was the shaded picnic areas and expanding the biking trails. Beyond that, it gets pretty low. Um, you can do this by age, by time in the city, by children at home and so forth. But what you can do is come to this page, and you can just look at it. So if you're looking to expand or improve the biking paths, there's a lot of people sixty-five to seventy-four who really care about it, or fifty, you know, forty-five to fifty-four. A little bit less among the eighteen to twenty-four-year-olds, and maybe even a little bit less among the seventy-five-year-olds. But you can kinda see it by age and what things, the shaded picnic areas, when they get older, they care more about this. Uh, the natural landscaping, they care about it when they're younger. So it's, I thought it was kind of interesting to kind of look at some of these things. Dog parks, they care about it when they're younger. These guys, they don't have kids, they have dogs, right? And so, that's what they wanna do, and it's kind of helpful to see that. Um, you can also just say, well, are men and women any different? And so at a, just at a quick glance, you can quickly see the men tend to care a little bit more about the canyon walking and biking trails. Uh, you can go with those who have kids, and they really care about that splash pad. But they also, I mean, want those walking paths and biking paths and so forth. So this is a really handy way for you to just kinda go through it. Um, you can also find out that the people in Smithfield care about the dog park, but there's not, there's probably only two of those people, so don't count that. And that's it. That's kind of the end of it. Um, we did ask for any final recommendations and suggestions. This is kind of, they've been through the whole survey, now there is their time to weigh in, share their final thoughts. This is a worthwhile place to go. And you can read all of the, a- a- all of the suggestions here and kinda go through them and review all of their suggestions. The last thing that's useful, maybe I guess there's two more things, but funding recommendations. What is your recommendation? Should we make something amazing? Should we make something great or something fair? And people definitely wanted something great. So they did kind of like you, they, they want you to do it in general. And then when we put money to it, you'd think, okay, you put money to it, how much is gonna fall off if we put actual money to it? Now, the money's not huge. It's per month, like ten dollars, twenty-four dollars and forty dollars, but very few people just said, don't do this. You know, you had some. And so for this kind of a thing, and thoughtfully done, and you know, and, and thoughtfully planned, you have support.
It's interesting to me that they're willing to have a property tax increase.
Yeah.
Cause when you talk to people, they say, no way.
You know, and, and, and I'm telling you, I just returned from a city in Texas, I was presenting, and I was talking to them. And they said, oh, well, we don't, we didn't increase the property tax, and they created a, it was a voluntary um, uh, part of the utility bill. So on the utility bill, they put here voluntary five dollars or ten dollars for parks and trails or whatever. And you could opt out. They had them not sign up, they had them opt out, and they had some people opt out. And you understand that, but they said hardly anybody opted out, and that money, he said, it's been going for fifteen years. And we have the best parks, we have the best trails, we just are able to maintain them.
Kind of what St. George, everyone loves the parks in St. George. How do they do those, Marcus?
Take out a ginormous ten million dollar bond every five years.
Oh, that'd do it too.
That's how they, that's how they do it.
That'd do it. But you can, so there's a couple of ways. So you can add property taxes, you can consider a utility bill line that is just a volunteer thing, and I think you have support.
That's awesome.
Mm-hmm, if, if, if you wanna communicate with the city, let's just u- use notify me and text messages and email. Frankly, everything they liked, but the top two were text and email, and they are super effective.
It's good info.
Any questions for me? Do you know, you signed up for a multi-year agreement, so at some point, we wanna think forward. We wanna think forward to maybe what next year is gonna be, you know, and, and, and we can start, oh, maybe six months ahead and start planning. And then get ready for your next one, when it, hopefully it's useful and, and, and for, interesting as this.
So you do surveys on any item the city wants, is that right?
Yeah.
Pretty much, we have done parks, which we just did with you, but we have done streets.
Yeah.
In in a city, they wanted to find out which streets should we focus on and prioritize as we try to do them. Other cities have done just a general, which of the city budget items? Would you prefer that we keep as a highest priority and so forth, and it is very helpful for our budgeting process? Anyway, I can, I can show Marcus and whoever would like to, I can show you some examples of some of the things we could. But but if you have something you'd like to do, and I haven't done before, like I know how to get to there anyway.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Interesting.
Thank you, Ron.
Take time, go through that because that's the future of the parks. The one thing we know that people in Hyde Park like is is their parks, and so we should continue exploring that, parks and trails that I told Tiffany earlier today that we're exploring other properties for parks, so.
And a reminder, next Tuesday at six P M. Here in this building, we're gonna do a whole work session dedicated to reviewing these results and starting to build a scope of work because one of the things that we're going to do is apply for a grant. It opens up in October to do a big master plan for the city to talk about connectivity and walking trails and biking trails. And get some real data to kind of support a long-term plan for the city's parks. And this is, this is what we needed to kind of kick that off. So next Tuesday at six.
And Ron was able to give me, and I I sent it out to everybody, the spreadsheet that had all the comments in one place, so you don't have to go in here and scroll down. But there's that Excel spreadsheet that has them all in one location. It makes it a lot easier to see those comments and. Thank you. All right, thank you. Yeah. This is only the first step. The next step is what are you gonna do with the data? So that's next week. All right, the next item on our agenda is to consider ordinance twenty twenty-five dash twenty R Z. It's an ordinance approving a rezone, a zoning map amendment for the property located approximately thirty-three fifty north on the highway. You've got this all in your in the boxes that you should have, be able to pull up.
There you go, Stephanie.
Oh, you are such a sweet lady, but um.
That looks, we may have violated the gift law.
Oh, yeah, leave them with the police, gosh dang. You guys are awesome. Thank you, see ya.
Mayor, we do have our city planner here, ready to give support if you would like.
I'm gonna tell you that what she's done with the analysis on inbox is amazing and I talked to her today, but I still want to say it publicly. Thank you. Mac, it it's just a great assessment and analysis look into how you've done that. And I think it lays it out well for the council. Thank you.
It's helpful.
Oh, yes, I will try to do that. Um, all right, I'm going to share with you. That's okay. Go back to. This one. Okay, now we're back to the agenda. So in the staff report, I did make sure to include information about how this rezone matches up with your general plan criteria and the future land use plan. This property has submitted to rezone to be able to develop apartments, townhomes and commercial as allowed by our city code. Exact unit counts and square footages will be determined after the rezone process. So we don't have any kind of layout or anything of that nature. It is for the entire twelve point six nine acres from commercial to mixed use. The general plan includes rezoning to mixed use as a strategy for the moderate income housing plan. And the future land use map identifies this parcel as eligible for the MX zoning. And then in the next section, I did include how this request is in conformance with the Hyde Park City Land Use Code. The approval standards there are one through four. Some of which include whether the proposed amendment would be harmonious with the overall character of existing development. Whether it would be consistent with the standards of any applicable overlay zone, you know, we don't have those. But another one is the extent to which the proposed amendment may adversely affect adjacent property. I went through and answered those questions and staff recommends that this zoning be approved for those reasons. I did include a possible motion in my staff report. You don't have to use it, but you're welcome to. And I'm open for questions if you have any. I think the thing I'm looking for is the maps. Those may have not.
Yeah, we have.
Okay, all right, very good. Yes, it should be there.
It's the sunrise square that would have the road that comes out to a signalized light.
There we go.
That's one.
Do we know what their intention is? Is it apartments? Is it condos?
That's what was included with the application is that it'll be a mix of of different kinds of housing that comply with the MX code, with the mixed use code.
And this is the first, I believe, request to change from commercial to mixed use that we've had in a number of months after we changed the requirements for the mixed use zone, correct? To increase the the percentage requirements for commercial property. Yeah, okay. So they're they're aware of that and I mean, I I don't have any problems with it. I propose that we accept, accept the possible motion. I appreciate all the, I appreciate all the staff work, huh? I moved to approve the rezone unless there's other comments of parcel zero four dash zero three seven dash zero zero one from commercial to mixed use based on the findings of fact in the staff report in conformance with the Hyde Park City Land Use Code, the general plan and the future land use map and recommendation from the Planning Commission. Have a motion to accept the rezone as stated. Is your second?
I'll second.
Got a second from Stephanie. Any additional discussion?
Yes, I would like to discuss.
Sure.
So in the motion or and you're restating that, you're saying that that this did come to us from planning and zoning with their approval.
Yes.
Right, okay, and then the additional work.
That was unanimous approval from.
Okay, right, thank you.
Any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed with nay? Motion carries five zero. The next item on the agenda is to consider an ordinance approved by a zoning map amending amendment for a portion of the property located approximately five twenty south, one hundred west in Hyde Park. Going from amending five point one one two acres from R two to P I, and that is public institutions.
Correct.
This, that five point one one acres was bought by the LDS church. And you have that map also in your box.
We put it up on the big screen as well, just to show you that it is not the entire parcel that's proposed for rezone. It's a portion of this parcel. The original intent was to split this parcel subdivision style. But to save some time and effort, the property owner decided to just rezone the part that they needed. And they will figure out what to do with the leftover at a later date.
So this isn't a subdivision?
This is not a subdivision. This parcel remains intact as is with just a portion being rezoned. The rest of the parcel will remain agriculture as it is right now. I'm sorry, R two as it is right now.
So council, do you have any additional comments or questions of Mikel on this? This also went to Planning Commission and had a unanimous approval there as well.
That's correct.
Is the church, church bought it?
Yes.
So does that change their need? I mean, are they gonna come back in and want to change some things with us?
No, it's, well, they're gonna come in with a development plan at some point of of what they're gonna do. But this puts it into this, the professional or professional institutional zone is what we have in our city zoning map for churches, medical, things of that nature, city building.
We have that.
Yeah, we have that. Any questions for Mikel? If not, we'd look for a motion. She she included a proposed emotion or you can do a near your version of it.
You can certainly go off script.
Certainly can, long as we identify the parcel and what we're rezoning.
And the fact that we are rezoning part of it, so the motion does include the words partial rezone. Based on the findings of fact.
Just go with what she's. Then you can copy paste it really easy into the minutes.
Yeah.
I move that we make a partial rezone on real property located at five twenty south, one hundred west in Hyde Park. Parcel number zero four dash zero three eight dash zero zero two three from R two to P I.
We have a motion for the rezone of this parcel.
Seconded.
Stephanie and a second from Tiffany. Any additional discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed with nay? One thing that I I council, I didn't bring up, I had some discussion this week in penalty with Marcus and with Mikel about how we're looking at strategically planning our water. And I, and and we're going to look at how that's allocated for the future. I think it's wise for the city to ensure that we're preserving water for our industrial areas as well as our residential area and how that dispersion and and we're going to know more this month of needs and wants and desires perhaps and and how to meet some of these expectations. So we're, we're trying to think in a long-term strategic plan of whatever the city is banking. And when developers come in, proportional separation of this is what we have, and perhaps even many of the cities in this valley don't allow what we have in our city code where they can, developers, rather than bringing water, they pay us to go get water. Many of the cities don't have that. That's not an option. They have to bring water. So that's I think we have to look long term. What's the best way to tackle this? And and Mikel and Marcus and company were trying to tackle that and look at that. What is don't make their problem our problem? How's that?
Yeah, yeah, because I would imagine as time goes on, water is harder and harder to find and
Yes.
Why put us on, add on us?
So is that something that the staff will bring to a city council meeting at some time in the future to for discussion then?
And yeah.
We can, it's been a while since, I mean, Carl White did a, I think, a study of fees a couple of years ago. Maybe it's been three or four years now. I don't know. You know, as far as residential use, and I know we're hoping to get more commercial and the impact, and so I don't know if that's part of this to. And a lot of state code has changed since then. We went to a more of a tiered rate. The state has changed that to to be more conducive to for cities. I'll just leave it at that and and additionally, we're looking at some strategies of of some of the the low water users and how for example, some, the widower, the widow that are struggling every time we we continue to have these, hold our our tax rate, they still get impacted. They still have these things. So we're trying to figure out how can we address that small group of people that that are being challenged financially. So the staff is looking at that. Colette and Melissa have been doing some good analysis of that for quite some time. And they're really doing a lot of heavy lifting on that. So it's, they're getting ready to come and approach to the council and have some ideas on this. So I think we we have a lot of people building nice big homes and yards for their kids, but what about this other smaller group of people that are are left in the margins. And so we're trying to look at that. One other thing I want to bring up to the council is the state has a code. And and Mayor Peterson and I are trying to figure out how we can influence our representatives. State is wanting to have a line that is a fire that is a fire risk zone. That's twelfth east and North Logan. That's fourth east in Hyde Park. And what they're trying to do is to collect a fee from anybody that's in that, in those zones. Have the city collect the fee and have the city take the beating for them and turn it over to the state so that they could have that for some sort of fire mitigation potentially that way. The the downside, well, there's a lot of downsides, but the down, one of the big downsides is that's gonna affect homeowners insurance. That's going, that will affect homeowners.
They're labeled that.
Yes, it's like building your house in a flood plain. Yes.
Yeah.
It's, it's, that's a terrible thing.
It's a terrible idea.
It's, it's, it's a very bad idea. And so we're trying to.
Well, and and the fundamental problem is they want to label everything east of fourth east as wildland fire interface when it's not. That's the fundamental problem.
Yes. Who's deciding, who decided it was fourth east and not seventh or tenth or twentieth or whatever it would be?
Somebody at the state level playing armchair detective.
It steals bills, cash valley, C H.
I was, I was at UAC this week, last couple of days and I was in on a conversation. It sounds like they passed this law and they just aren't really. They just don't know how to really, they don't understand. I think it was supposed to go through property tax.
But it's, it's, it's horrible.
Yeah, I, they just didn't think it through, so.
Well, when when the city has already been working with the Forest Service for for fire mitigation with Bonneville Shoreline Trails, with USU and and drought resistant or or flame resistant grasses so that they don't burn as fast. So. grasses so that they don't burn as fast. So it takes nothing like that into effect. Cities all along this all the cities, even as you go over onto the Wellsvilles, they're all up there. Everyone's would about get affected and it might put some people where they can't get homeowners insurance. So I'm not sure if I want to be the bearer of that bad news to to the residents somehow, but they need to be contacting their representative. And
Do you know who sponsored the bill initially?
I don't. I don't.
Uh, yes, I.
Like, do we know? Who do I send my hate mail to?
Um, one of them is down at the south end of this valley.
But those are the people we should be talking to. We should be publicizing what they're.
Casey.
What? That was a bad call. That's a bad call.
It's it's a bad call. It's it's one that will affect people horribly.
And the public needs to know about it.
Yeah, I debated on do I write this in our city newsletter and get that message out and put somebody's email addresses, attach it, none of that being my email address, because
Absolutely.
I hate receiving. We get enough meetings on our own. We don't need to receive them for state representatives. So.
I think so.
That's anyway, we're we have a mayor's association meeting next weekend, and we're going to be discussing trying to get a cash county citywide, all municipalities, what is our strategy and how do we do this? It's it's bad enough that it's a statewide thing, but sticking in our Willwell in Cash County, it's the only one that escapes it is Mendon, and they're in a floodplain. So so it's it's a challenge. That one's just got bad written all over it. With that, Kurt, do you have anything? Forrest?
Question, anything on the deer?
Yeah, well, we've had a lot of damage still that's still coming in, particularly down to Mark's place, but that has all been done by the Bucks right now. The plan specifically doesn't allow us to take the Bucks unless we coordinate through that with them on that. So that being said, we're seeing the deer around, but we haven't been able to take any yet on there. Occasionally, they're around, but as the guys have gone out to go shoot them, they're they're not finding them there. So I don't know if it's the high heat right now that have driven them up a little bit, and they'll come back down in September, but we're still working on it. So.
We have until when?
October one, I believe.
October one? Or October thirty?
August, December.
I bet it's October one because deer season is in October.
Yeah, I think it is on that. So our guys are out every day trying to do it, but.
Last one they had to shoot. Anything on that one?
On which ones?
Disease. One the diseased one?
Probably had wasting disease.
Oh, yeah, it did have the chronic wasting disease there. And we did get their help with D W R. They came and did that.
River Health's got that. So I can talk to Jordan on that.
Uh, no, we had D W R.
No, D W R took that?
Yeah. Yeah, they came up.
And you met with Mark, haven't you, Ashcroft?
I've I've been in communication with Mark and he's I've sent all that information to the chief and.
My guys have been out there to talk with Mark on there. So there, like I said, we're trying to do it.
It's Asian. I I told him last year that we were getting this plan put together, and by the time we get it put together, it's probably not going to save your crop for this coming year, which was right now.
Yeah.
But I hate to see the damage that he has received. It's just terrible.
It is. It makes you sick.
Yeah.
On that, so.
So. Anything else? Gerald, have you got anything?
I don't.
Tiffany?
Um, this weekend is the National Day of Service and Hyde Park are city park is scheduled as one of the locations. I don't know. We have another one, Dave, in town.
Lee Park's the only one in Hyde Park. It's.
So for people to come out and volunteer. So we'll have people there from on Saturday from like eight thirty till noon.
Something like that. There'll be a.
The flag ceremony at the Cedar Ridge at what eight eight thirty?
Yeah. So that's happening this weekend. And then our front porch senior group for fifty five and older is going to be starting in November. And I was wondering, Stephanie, if maybe the youth council would be interested in helping me get wires out to some of the senior P U Ds to stick them on their doors, kind of like towards middle of November or middle of October. I know you have the scare house and stuff happening, so I don't want to interfere with that. Even the very beginning of November would be okay. But we can talk later about that.
You probably could give everybody on this council one of those fires too.
And tell tell everybody, want everybody. It's going to be a monthly activity. It'll be it'll be good. Yeah, we're excited about it. So our Get Healthy Hyde Park is sponsoring it.
Minus the mushroom part.
Speak up some during those shows?
Yes, the first activity is going to be growing mushrooms in your kitchen and how to use them. We're going to have a USU. So Ryan's going to teach how to grow mushrooms. Gourmet mushrooms. Gourmet mushrooms. That you can cook with. And then then Jenna from U S U Extension will be demonstrating how to cook with them. We'll do a taste test and we'll have some healthy snacks.
Some of those vacations I wouldn't even need a passport for.
No, we're keeping it on the up and up. It's all good, healthy, healthy things.
And we'll be coming up sometime soon with a pavilion name.
Yeah, well, yeah, do you put?
I don't know where that's at on Mark.
Oh, where it's at?
How soon from having to sign for that pavilion?
So they will cut it? They were waiting for me to give them the, do you want the Lions Park one cut for the pavilion as well? Or do you want?
Well, I really want to give marks.
So we'll just do marks for now.
But okay.
Because he just waiting for me to say yes, do it. And I just haven't told him yes, because I didn't know what we were naming the
Okay.
The lower Lions Park one. But I can do yes, and we can get marks probably up and going. And I would think in before the snow ever.
Yeah, we want to get that. Have some recognition for all the service.
It's all ready to go.
Okay. Stephanie?
Yeah.
And youth?
The youth council is starting our speak alley. And we are looking for a small wooden boat. We can just borrow it or have it. So if anybody has a Yeah.
Like, like, what do you mean, like a small wooden boat, like a eight by twelve foot dinghy? You know, something.
Not probably. We just. Well, we probably would give it back, but we need it for a pirate ship.
I'm also looking for thirty five foot shape one.
Oh, gosh.
Just if we're throwing it out there.
For a pirate ship.
A little wooden dinghy.
Yeah, just a little wooden dinghy. And if it's in poor shape, so much the better.
Okay.
Anything else? Like the cannonball hole, isn't it?
Yes, exactly. That's what we need.
That's it.
Dave? I have nothing for this evening.
With that.
Just a sec. I have something.
Donna's got something.
On September twenty fifth, it's the meet the candidates night. So just reminding you all to um, especially Dave and Gerald and and then wondering if the youth council was still planning on participating.
Yes. I'll have three is sufficient, or would you like four?
Three is great. Okay.
That's seven o'clock.
That's seven o'clock. Yep.
You know, if I'm willing to not be there, I would at least not be participating.
Yeah, I don't think it's necessary that you participate, but you definitely be there.
Well, yeah, I'll I'll be. When is it? September what?
The fifth Thursday night.
It's a Thursday.
We intentionally did it.
Yeah, it's the night before I leave. Okay.
Two weeks from tomorrow.
And if any of the candidates have any questions about city operations or other things that might be itching at your brain, feel free to reach out to the city staff. We're happy to help.
Always open book, not only council, Charlene, you're welcome to come in and ask any questions. It's an open book. It's not a very thick book, but it's an open book.
How how long do you anticipate that to go?
Six hours.
We're hoping it should it should really only be an hour, but tell them an hour and a half.
Okay.
Because usually people will want to talk afterwards or something like that, but okay. Well, with that.
Oh, I'll make a motion that we go home.
Got a motion to go home.
We'll get the chopper.
Stephanie and a second from Tiffany? Or Kurt or everybody? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?